All right. Good evening. This is Tuesday, August 12th, 2025, meeting in the town of Berlin Planning Board. As a preliminary matter, please note this meeting is being recorded and that some of the attendees are participating by video conference. Uh, this is Tom Sanford Chair of the Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members of the Planning Board or President can hear me prior to me calling their, calling the meeting to order. Planning Board members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. J T H.
Here.
Timothy Wheeler.
Yeah.
Carolyn McDonald.
Yeah.
Okay, with a call and I call this meeting to order at seven thirty-five P M. Tuesday, August 12th, 2025. This is an open meeting of the Planning Board being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency uh, in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts due to the outbreak of COVID-19 virus. Some specific information and general guidelines for the remote participation by members of the plant public can be found on the town of Berlin's website. The governor's order suspends the requirement of an open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location and allows and encourages us to participate remotely. For this meeting, the Planning Board is convening using the Zoom platform as posted on the agenda, which includes links for the public to join this meeting. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I'll invite each board member by name to provide any comments, questions, and penetrating insights and all motions. Please hold all your insights till your name is called. Board members and speakers, please remember to mute your telephone or computer when you're not speaking. Speak clearly to ensure accurate minutes are recorded. And for any response, please wait until you're yielded before state your name before speaking. If a board member wishes to encourage wishes to engage in conversation within one another, please do so through me to avoid multiple conversations happening at the same time. Lastly, please note that each vote in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. Thank you all for your understanding and cooperation. Alrighty. First order of business. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes from last meeting?
So moved.
Right?
Say that again?
It was in June, wasn't it? A long time.
Second.
Yeah, it was a while back. Okay, real motion, second, anybody, uh? Okay to discuss. Amend, correct? Penetrating insight on Jay's outstanding minutes. Seeing nothing, I'll ask you to vote. Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
J T H.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
And Tom Sanford, aye. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you. And now can we entertain a motion to approve the, or I guess it was approved, it would be approved, the nomination of Virginia Zoukan.
Zukatinsky.
Zink, Zoukinen. Thank you.
Zinksky, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, approve or appoint?
Pardon?
Approve or appoint?
I guess it's a joint appointment.
It is. About some of select board.
So it's, it's a motion to appoint.
Okay.
I guess. I'll second that.
Okay. Motion's made in second, seconded. Uh, any discussion? Okay. Seeing none, I'll ask you to vote. Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
J T H.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
Thomas Andrew. Who's mute?
Tom, there you go.
Sorry. Aye.
And Tom Sanford, aye. Motion carries unanimous. This is a sort of housekeeping because I think they've already gone before the select board. So. Alrighty.
Awesome.
Any other housekeeping that we need to do?
Um. Tim, didn't you say we needed to confirm our?
That's right. Yeah. We, I, I move that we, uh, um, appoint, yeah. Appoint J Teach as the alternate to the C M R P C, um, delegate body.
Hey, wait, that's me.
I wholeheartedly second that.
All right, we're not going to debate this. We're going to take a vote right now.
Quick, quick.
You did a fine job. Don't worry about it.
I didn't make any mistakes.
That's right. Well, you were perfect.
Or any meetings.
You've gone to some over the years.
I have. I went to the dinner one time, remember? There was a nice dinner out in wherever it was. Central Mass.
Okay.
Do we, does it have to be, it has to be a planning board member?
Yeah.
Oh.
No, actually, you could probably get away with it not being a planning board member, but.
Really?
Um.
Do you have any unsby any chance?
It. But we, we need somebody on the books, that's all, so.
Do we need to vote?
Yeah. Motion made in second and I'm doing the roll call. So Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
Thomas Andrew.
Aye.
Uh, and J Teach, can you vote for yourself? Sure you can.
Yeah.
Guess so. Yeah.
Is that an affirmative?
We should have stayed. I should have stayed, right?
No.
We got votes anyway.
Right.
Aye.
I'll take aye, but I want at least a factor of two raised for this year.
So moved.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, motion made and carried unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, Jack.
Thank you, Jack.
Thank you for Tim doing a fantastic job as the primary guy with C P M R C.
Agreed.
Yep.
Any other business or?
Hmm, I don't think so. I haven't actually been to the paper mailbox. Have you been, Tim?
Um, yes, I have, and then didn't find anything there. Actually, you know what? I've made a mistake.
Hmm.
As my wife would say, I thought I was wrong and I was right, but, um.
Did we need to vote you?
Yes, we need to vote me. The select board voted Jay already, so. You need to vote me.
Uh, I make a motion to appoint, um, appoint Tim Wheeler as the primary Central Mass Regional Planning delegate.
Yep.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion in a second to appoint Tim, um, and I'll ask you to vote. Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
J Teach.
Aye.
Thomas Andrew.
Aye.
Tim Wheeler.
Aye.
And Tom Sanford, aye. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you. Cool.
Moving right along?
Absolutely. Clicking these off. Like we've not fallen out of practice.
Hmm. It's seven forty-five. We should have someone from Canara Capital. We have, uh, Ryan Proctor, Ryan Proctor from Dillison in, uh.
I have a David Swanson and a Matthew Moore and a Ryan W- uh, Whittig. Have all raised their hands.
Wow.
Promote them all. Tom?
Um, sure.
Okay.
I have the drawing if they don't, if we want to show it, by the way. I said to tell you.
Hello, everyone.
Hello, everyone.
How are you? Who's taking lead?
Matt, you want to take it?
Yes. Yeah, so we just, uh, this is our team here. We're, um, we're a small group. There should be another guy hopping on, uh, Dan Di Matteo, possibly, um. So just, uh, you can promote him if he's, uh, happens to jump on, but.
I'll let you know if I see him.
Sounds good. Thank you. We.
Yeah, I think you just conjured him. There he is.
Bring him on.
There we go. Oh, he declined. Let's try again and see if that was an accident. Hmm. He does not appear to want to be promoted.
Okay, that's fine.
He just wants to be in the audience.
Yep.
Okay, so what are we doing?
Yeah, we're just, we just wanted to get an open forum here. We're, we're under contract to purchase the property, uh, of topic tonight. We, um, Dan's a friend of mine. We work with Dan. Dan's family owns the property. They've owned and operated the property for sixty-plus years. It's existing use is a junkyard. Um, and we're under contract to purchase the land plus the business. Um, we've discussed, we have a due diligence period and we've just kind of, we're weighing our options and what we want to do uh, with the property, um, and want to get your guys' feedback. We ideally like to do, uh, uh, outdoor storage, industrial outdoor storage or something of that uh, sort. Um, I'm sure the, the town would love to see the junkyard go away, uh, even though it's, it's a good business, um. Uh, we just kind of, we're just kind of looking for your feedback. We, uh, we're looking for the best use and, um, want to understand what the town's amenable to uh, allowing there. It's, I think it's zoned as residential and agriculture, uh, but it's a big parcel. And while we would be considering doing residential there, we'd need some sort of transitional period where we would use it as industrial outdoor storage and uh, get some rent, get some income, um, while we plan to do the, uh, the second phase. Um, if everything goes to plan, so that's, uh, that's how we're looking at it, but we'd love to hear what, uh, what you guys think and what any other ideas that, what you'd like to see there. Open to, open to feedback.
Well, while our chair is making his notes, what exactly is outdoor industrial storage?
Uh, for example, public pipes, large plumbing companies, just storing pipes, materials, building materials. And construction equipment.
Nothing hazardous.
No. No, it'd be an improvement from what's existing there.
So it would be, it would have to be, it's not allowed in the RNA, that those uses aren't allowed in the RNA right now. So how do we transition from the, the use that it is now to another non-conforming use? I don't think you can.
Um. I think, I mean, one issue, of course, is that the fact that it's own residential agricultural. The other is I was trying to figure out how that use resides in our use chart. Um, and whether we even provide for that type of use in any zone. Have, have you looked at the zoning bylaws, um, in, in any fashion to determine whether you think this, there, there's a description of what you want to do in our zoning now?
We have. David had gone through, uh, and and done some due diligence on it. We, we're kind of, it is, it's a unique use, uh, so we weren't really sure what, uh, what category that would fall under.
Well, there is a building materials use under commercial.
In an industrial zone.
Yeah, commercial uses, yep.
I mean, what, th- this would involve a lot of movement of material, um, trucking in and trucking out, that sort of thing?
Uh, no more than what's existing there. Uh, it would be less movement from moving in and out of what, uh, you know, the junkyard, this concept dropping off and then recycling and taking out. This would be more larger loads dropping, uh, but we would obviously have to find a tenant that, that likes the site and we'd have to understand what their, uh, what their use would be, what their hours would be, what their schedule would be, but typically it's dropping large loads of material. And then you still, using that as a, as a drop-off point, uh, and storage point and then using the material, shipping it to sites, uh, as needed, depending on their construction schedules.
Hmm.
There is a, it's called junkyards, you know, in our bylaw.
It's a, which aren't allowed in any zone.
Loud, oh, right.
This is the grandfathered use from way back pre-zoning, really, so.
Yeah.
Um, it, how many acres is the parcel?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
But only, I believe only five to seven acres are being used uh, actively right now.
So you'd be proposing to bring these are large trailer truck loads of material?
Yes, eighteen wheeler. Um, construction vehicles bringing in materials and dropping materials, unloading it.
Up, up Coburn Road. So it, the way I look at it, it would, we'd have to um, develop a, a a definition of what it is you'd want to do. We'd then have to go to a town meeting and have that use, um, added to the zoning bylaw and the youth's chart and then uh, who, some, somehow, it, it wouldn't be a use we'd allow in a residential agricultural zone because that would mean any place in town, which
Right.
would not fly, of course. So then we'd be talking about rezoning this twenty-five acre parcel to well.
Yeah, and we've, we've been warned about spot zoning.
Right. It'd be a limited industrial use?
Yeah, it'd have to be.
Could you treat it as an overlay?
Um, boy, that's a tricky one, though. I mean, it's not.
Yeah, but if you, if you, if you tied it to, uh, a minimum of, say, twenty-five acres, that would eliminate most of the, you know, little five acre or four acre mom and pop storage in residential.
Yeah. Storage, storage.
If, if, that's a, whatever we're talking about here is going to be a very tough poll and will require a two-thirds voted town meeting, um. One thing that you might want to look at is uh, whether, um, this modification of the pre-existing non-conforming use could somehow be construed as, you know, less, um, detrimental and allowable under Massachusetts case law for the continuation of a non-conforming grandfathered use, um. I certainly have not gotten down in the weeds on how that would, you know, on, on how that would, um, how that would work, but there is a certain amount of wheel room in the, in the grandfathered use and it strikes me as though, um, frankly, I think that's the only practical way of, of doing it. And I'm, I'm not at all sure that the the case law on construction of, um, zoning would actually support that, but you know, of course, I, you know, I am aware of the fact that some modifications of a non-conforming use can be done, um, particularly if they, uh, mitigate or don't increase any detrimental impact to the, uh, of others and so on. But you guys would have to talk to, uh, zoning council on that, see if that had any legs.
That, that's, I mean, at the end of the day, that's really exactly what we're talking about. Essentially, we'd be purchasing the land and the business. And then essentially changing what the business is doing from being a junkyard to, uh, industrial outdoor storage. So obviously there is a case to be made there that we're.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, yeah. I think where I'm going is if you're keeping, you know, for the transitional period, the building and everything, instead of storing junk cars, you're storing um, construction.
Could be school buses, could be, uh, you know, could be a lot of much, much less intense, you know, detrimental uses.
To me, that's, and, and as I say, I have not gotten down into weeds on that at all, but, um, it really seems to me that that's the only likely and not, you know, not a slam dunk or certitude, but it seems to me that, that's really the only practical approach to it.
Good. Yeah, that sounds right. We can, uh, we can take that on. So is there anybody in particular we should be reaching out to within the town?
Um, no, I think, I, I really think you gotta, you gotta talk to a zoning lawyer in Massachusetts and have them look at it and see what they feel about whether under, you know, the prevailing application of pre-existing non-conforming uses in Massachusetts, the changes that you're making could be fit within that. So you're not talking to somebody from the town. You'd be talking to, uh, zoning council, I think.
Understood. Okay, uh, let's assume that, that he thinks there is a case or maybe not. Um, let's, let's say if, if there's not, right? So we're, we're, we have a due diligence period where we're we're looking for a use here that makes sense to us. If not, um, you know, it'll, it'll continue as a junkyard, which I'm assuming, you know, if we've the tower take a vote on it, they probably want something different, a little more cleaner, cleaner use than, than a junkyard, I think. If there are any, uh, I mean, I know there's a process to that, but, um, you know, that use is
Yeah.
has been around for sixty years and it's, uh, uh, obviously something that I don't think um, the town or any neighbors want, so we.
No, it's, it's, you know, we, I shouldn't agree it's not an attractive use, but you know, the, the question is how to get from A to B, the system with, with only by law and any amendments to the zoning by law. And how one could present those, um, those changes, because if we take what is currently a pre-existing non-conforming use and instead of that, we drop in an industrial overlay, spot zone, dome, whatever it would be, um, then that, you know, that really opens the door to anything that would be industrial, et cetera. And I, I just, uh, um, I, I would not bet, I would not bet a huge amount of money that that would be attractive at town meeting. I don't know how the members of board would give. Granted, it's, it's not an attractive use, but how to get there, um, with, other than a use that was allowed in the zoning today is, is, I think, going to be tough.
Understood.
I remember years ago, Emerson Chandler commenting on the, the junkyard and um, his observation was it's, it's hard to exist without junkyards because they serve a purpose. And that, um, to suggest that there not be any junkyards anywhere is perhaps a dangerous proposal. Um, so you know, I'm, I'm, I guess I'm not warming up to the idea of substituting one um, industrial use with some fairly heavy vehicles traveling up and down Coburn Road for what happens now. I, I, I think at town meeting, if any of this had to come to a vote there, it might be rather difficult, like Thomas said, to get that through.
Yeah, and I would, I would comment, um, this is the same thing that we have said to other people who have purchased property in town that don't really, that their plans don't, um, coincide with the current zoning. And they've asked us what we want to see. Um, we want to see it. We want to see what we zoned it for. If you want to see it for something different, you have to convince us that there's a reason. Because that's what we picked.
Of course, of course, and, and our plan would be, I mean, we don't, it wouldn't have to be a permanent plan. Um, uh, there's twenty-five acres, only roughly five to seven are being used by the junkyard now. Our plan is a transition. Right? We would use it for, to collect income.
Sure, and, and that makes sense for you guys. Right, that makes sense for you guys, but, so I was just looking on the Mass G I S. And there are at least seven other properties, at least twenty-five acres or bigger on the other side of Coburn, between the other side of Coburn and Highland Street. So to do, to make any kind of allowance for a twenty-five acre property um, opens all of those up also, because we can't just say it, we can, the state doesn't look fondly on spot zoning because it looks like a favor. So if we do something specific for you guys for that piece of property, it has to, we have to, the way it has to be crafted, it has to be theoretically allowed in other places too. So we would be opening the town up at least seven other properties, and that's just within that little block of streets that I looked at. Um, there's still a fair number of large properties in town that, um, something could be appropriate, it could be, um, opened up to industrial use. Should we do something for twenty-five acres for industrial use in a residential agricultural zone? So, um, that's, that's a hard one.
Yeah, and it's not contiguous to any other similar use or yeah, as I say, I think that's that's really a top road to help.
You, you, you make a very fair point. This is a, this is a case for a zoning attorney who can dive into the language and see if there's a, uh, something that gives you as a town something to stand on, because at the end of the day, there is a use here that's not attractive and not desirable. And there's and obviously we don't, if you allowed us to do this without any legal justification, we don't want those other twenty-five acres being opened up to, you know, undesirable uses also, so.
Nor do we.
Nobody does. So you gotta, you have to protect your, your legal standing and obviously if we're allowed to do something, there has to be a very specific defendable reason for both us and for you that allows you to have the next person that comes here, points at us and says, hey, those guys did that. And you say, okay, well, here was their legal reason for doing that. And here was their, you know, likely nobody else would have that same rationale because there's no other junkyard operating in a residential or agricultural zone.
Right. And again, what I said before, I think if there's any possible way to do this, it would be if you're keeping enough of the facilities there and you're changing what's stored there from junk to um, construction materials and the ingress and egress are going to be less than it is now. You should talk to a zoning lawyer to see if you can make the argument that it's a permissible modification of a pre-existing non-conforming use that is sufficiently continuous that you can you can continue for the period of time. You don't intend to use more than the existing five or six acres for this transitional use. Are you?
Correct, correct. Yeah, we would like, we're looking in, we ultimately would like to do residential there. It's just
Right, right. But you're not going to use more than the existing area that's used for the junkyard for the storage, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, because that would, that would be a major issue with respect to the approach that I was just talking.
So just had one question playing this all the way through. So let's say we go down this path of engaging a zoning attorney and they believe they have a they believe they have a legal argument to allow us to assume new ownership and transition the operation from a junkyard to a less less intensive use, but still contiguous with a certain level of permissibility based on the existing use, non-conforming. Who would be the arbiter of the changing of that intensity? Is that something that the, the building department would normally enforce when we have an existing business that's changing how they do things? Who?
Well, I think first, first of all, we would have our town council, zoning council review it. And that would be the first hurdle. And then I think it would probably be the building inspector, wouldn't it? Other members of the board?
We'd have to, it would have to have a zoning change.
No.
No?
No.
You'd, you'd go to the building inspector, he'd make a determination whether the use that you were proposing was allowed or not. And if it wasn't, then he'd send you to the ZBA.
Right. And, and again, if you went the route that I'm saying, what he would be looking at is whether this was a modification of the pre-existing non-conforming use that was no more detrimental and with a sufficient continuation that it would allow you to continue it under those changed circumstance. You with me?
To give, to give an analogy that we're a little bit more familiar with in the residential world, we're taking a pre-existing non-conforming property and operating within the bounds of the existing pre-existing use, just making it less, you know.
Yeah, that's, that's basic, that's, that's on a high level, what what I was suggesting. Something you, you, you could look at.
In regard to the eventual residential use, you just just assuming that you do single family homes, like a dozen or 15 or what's your
I, I, I believe it's zoned single family, not multi. There's, I think there's a project up the road that was similar size and sold a few years ago. And I did think they did townhomes or duplexes. Well, uh, but this, this particular parcel, correct me if I'm mistaken, but I think it's a, I think it's a single family zone. So yes, it would be single family. Uh, we, we would have to, you know, do a feasibility study and figure out what what the layout would be, but we're not sure how many homes would, there would be, but that would be single family. Yeah.
We'd, we'd be looking to operate within the confines of the, your, your zoning with whatever goes there going forward. So we most likely wouldn't be looking to rezone or do anything like that. We'd be coloring in the lines with the new use.
Right. Good. Yeah. And if all else fails, we'll go agriculture. Fun fact about Ryan, he's got a couple of pet goats. Maybe we can carve out a little, a little section for him. He can let his goats run around.
There you go.
All right.
Okay.
We appreciate your time, guys. Thank you. We'll, we'll go back to the drawing board and we'll, we'll take it from there.
All right.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Take care.
Okay. Do we have people from Dillson Roy?
Yep. Greg Roy is here.
Hi, everybody.
How are you?
Thank you. Can you hear me? Okay.
They're a little muted, but yes, we can hear you.
Oh, now is that better? One second, let me see if I
Well, there you go.
Was that better if I talk over this way? It's probably because I have my How about now? That's fine. Okay. Um, there's like always, there's like three microphones I can choose from. So I think I was using the one from this computer over here. Is, I, I'm Greg Roy with Dillson Roy. I'm representing Artemis Farms this evening. Would you, I, I can't see the participants, but I expect Bruce Wheeler, uh, representing the applicant, is he on?
He is.
Could he be promoted as a panelist as well?
Sure.
Thank you.
Maybe if I can get, if I can get my thing to work, right? There we go. There we go.
I'll give a minute to come in before I Hey, Bruce.
Oh, you're muted.
You're Bruce.
There we go.
You are. Okay. Thanks, Bruce. And thank you.
I made it to the, the level here.
Thanks. Thanks very much for your time. Um, I think you have kind of a loaded agenda, so I'll try to be as brief as I can here with my opening remarks. Can I, would it be possible to share my screen or acceptable or?
Yes.
Okay, let me see if I can get that to work. Okay. How's that? Can you all see that? Okay. All right. Great. Well, again, uh, my name is Craig Roy with Dillson Roy, um, representing Artemis Farms this evening. Uh, Bruce Wheeler is, is representing, uh, Artemis Farms um, as the applicant. And we appreciate your time. Um, we're here tonight for a preliminary subdivision of the lot, uh, adjacent to, uh, 248, uh, Central Street. And we're proposing a, uh, dead end subdivision road, uh, system. Um, which would access ultimately six lots, and I'll go into this a little bit more in detail. Uh, in a minute, but I just wanted to give you the high level overview. The, the property sits behind, uh, this, this piece right here, I think is, um, the address is 240 Central. So the property we're looking at is, has frontage right here on Central Ave, and then kind of comes back like this. And goes back to the old railroad right away. Back in this location here. Um, it also has a significant amount of land on the northerly side of the railroad right away. That, um, that, uh, the applicant, uh, has also, uh, engaged in purchasing, um, sort of came as a, as a um, sorry, I'm getting a little feedback here. I hope you're not. Um, it came as a both parcels were conveyed together, um, as part of the, as part of the land deal from the previous owner. And part of that land deal was an agreement, uh, between the previous owner of the property in question and the owners of 248 Central, uh, Ave, which is this parcel up here. A number of years ago, before, again, before Bruce and Artemis Farms were involved, um, the previous owner of the land had negotiated a land swap for a piece of land, which is right in this location here, um, to be deeded, uh, to the, uh, the piece in the back, um, for, in exchange for a similar sized piece of land. Um, and the idea surrounding that, uh, was to provide access to the property, uh, in a manner more, um, in a more feasible manner. Um, you're probably all familiar with this. You're probably more familiar with it than me because you drive by it more than I do. Uh, but the, um, the frontage for this property is rather steep. And, and, and fairly, uh, difficult, uh, to access. So it was envisioned a number of years ago, and Bruce probably has the history on that, uh, more than I do, if you have questions on it. But when Bruce purchased the property, he also purchased the right, uh, if you will, um, the negotiated right by the previous owner, uh, to do this land swap. So we're looking, uh, to take advantage of that as part of this application. And we prepared, uh, this subdivision road, uh, to access through that 50 foot strip that would come in with a 500 foot, um, in accordance with your, with your subdivision regulations, a 500 foot cul-de-sac um, to access, uh, into the property, which would gain, uh, access to the, the front, uh, portion of the land where there's four lots. As I mentioned, there's a significant portion of land on the northerly side of the railroad right away. Um, and there is some usable, when I say usable, I say upland area immediately adjacent to the, um, to the railroad right away, um, that the applicant would like to, uh, utilize as part of the development. We have initiated, um, discussions with, um, this, the, uh, the owners of the railroad right away, but that's, that's still in review, but we're, we're, we of course understand that, um, there's, there are, there is, uh, approval that needs to happen with the owners of that, uh, that property, um, before we could certainly do a neat construction, um, or you know, any, any definitive plans. Uh, but we wanted to come before you with this preliminary plan, um, and kind of just get the process starting, started. We, um, we did receive some comments from, uh, town departments, board of health and the like. We have updated the plans uh, recently, I think last week or the, or, or early the week before, late the week before, on the first of August. Um, to add septic areas and, and wells and things, um, as, as were requested. Uh, but again, we're at a preliminary stage here. We have shown the proposed roadway, the proposed lots. We've advanced the, uh, road grading a little bit further than what would, we would normally do in a preliminary filing. But we wanted to make sure that we, we, uh, we had studied that a little bit because there is a wetland, uh, crossing, uh, that would, would be proposed there.
It's actually a river crossing.
Thank you, wetland resource area crossing. Thank you. I wasn't trying to minimize it.
Yep.
So we, we have advanced that, uh, just to make sure that we, uh, we, we felt, you know, that we had a feasible option there, which we do, uh, indeed, and I believe we have. And of course, we understand that, that this, again, a preliminary subdivision filing, when we get to it, if we were to get to a definitive phase, we understand we have to permit this through, um, we'd have to get septic system approvals from the board of health. We'd have to get an order of conditions from the conservation commission. We'd have to get a definitive, definitive approval through your, uh, through your board, of course. So, um, I think that's all I wanted to say. Bruce, did you want to add anything?
No, I didn't. I didn't have anything else. That was a good summary, Greg. Thank you.
Yep. So thanks. I appreciate it. I'm sure you, you folks may have some questions, comments, and that's what we're here for. So, uh, happy to take those.
If you don't get permission from DCR to cross the railway, will you still build the four houses in front?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, I have a question, I guess, trying to figure out order of activity here. If if the land swap takes place and the the lot gains the back triangle. Right now it's, how many square feet is that lot?
Oh boy, that's a good question. I don't have the exact area, um, on top of my head, but the triangle area is the exact same area as the, as the 50 foot piece. So we would be doing a, you know, and, and, um, equal area exchange. So the land area would remain the same.
So let's, let's say that it's I mean, is it 100,000 square feet or is it 80,000 square feet? Do you, you have a
I think so. I think it's roughly, I think it's roughly two acres.
So here's the question, if when you create this new, new lot, it, it doesn't have frontage on Central that's adequate anymore. So it would eventually have frontage on the new subdivision road. Which would be adequate for a 80,000 square foot lot, which is what we require.
Right.
But if the subdivision road is never built, then that lot would remain non-conforming.
If the land swap were to happen, but the subdivision never happened.
Right. So would we, would we have to ask you to create? Uh, we have another provision in our bylaw where if you don't have the frontage you need, you create a I think it's 200,000 square foot lot. And to work with that reduced frontage, it, is there an interim step that has to be made here? In which you create that lot so it, it stands alone as a hammerhead lot or whatever we call it and, or backland lot and until the road is finished and approved. At, at that time, it could then pick up its frontage from the new road, but I don't know where it gets fronted.
Yeah, I, that's a great question. And it's probably a legal question. I mean, I think technically speaking, again, I'm, I guess I'm putting on my attorney's hat. I'm keenly aware that I think there's an attorney on your board. So I don't, I certainly don't want to be, don't want to be presumptuous here, but I think it would be a matter of timing on the conveyance. I mean, I think, I think we could go through with approvals of, of the subdivision. And until such time as it's actually conveyed, that you, you know, you, you don't actually you, you can get a, you can get a full definitive subdivision approval. And until you convey the land, you know, put it on record and convey it by deed, it's not really done. You know, you, you, you still, you still haven't, you still haven't conveyed anything until the attorneys kind of put their, you know, put the deeds together and do the actual conveyances. So I think we, I think I understand your question, um, and I think it's a really good question. I think we're probably going to have to answer it to say that we'll come back to you with a better, with a better answer. But I think it's going to be a matter of, of timing. And I think um, that you know, like I said, I, I think that there's a way that, that this could be done, that if the road isn't built, uh, for whatever reason, and I probably can be done with conditions or legal agreements that, um, that that parcel would not convey. Um, and that it would still remain part of that parcel. So you wouldn't have any, so that the land swap just wouldn't happen until such time as the road was constructed and it was, and it was actually, uh, you know, there, there was actually a bona fide improved access. But I think we'd have to, you know, I don't want to infer that I'm the legal, um, expert here in the room. I think we'd want to probably get Bruce's counsel to weigh in on that. But I, I believe that there would be a way to structure that, but it's a great question. It is, it is a timing issue. You're, you're correct.
Yeah.
Clear if you didn't get the swap and we approved a plan that assumed it. You'd have to come back with an empty plan. You couldn't, you'd have a plan that couldn't be executed.
Yeah, we, we understand what we're talking about. You're going to go and get some advice as to how to strategize that, I guess. So.
We're going to bring the attorney to the next meeting and so that we can have a, a, a more of a comprehensive discussion about it.
Yeah. I mean, it's a good, great, great question.
So my, my next question, so So my my next quest, so what's your timetable in working with the? The state in regard to the access across that right away?
Um it's ongoing. Uh we filed it several months back. Um quite frankly, I haven't heard in a bit. So we need to uh we need to pound the drum a little bit there. Um but um so I I don't have an update for you, unfortunately. Um as you can imagine, that process is probably going to take longer than my client would like it to. Um. But it, you know, we have made the application and the in the inquiry and we're just we're sort of in a holding pattern. So I'd have to what what all I can do is commit to try to get you a a you know, a better ETA on that. Um. But again, we understand that, you know, um and again, I don't want to be presumptuous, but should you. Approve a preliminary subdivision, of course, we're looking for what is effectively a non-binding. Decision on your part by by state statute uh anyway, but it it certainly would require. Um you know, it certainly could be contingent upon um upon successful approval of that. If you know, we can't. We need both. We need your we need your approval ultimately by uh through a definitive subdivision process and approval by the state. So. One of you could grant and the other one could not, and then we can't do it, you know, then it then we can't do it. So there's sort of mutually. I mean, they're related, but they're kind of mutually exclusive a little bit. Um we 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 can't. You know, we we understand we can't proceed without that, you know, in any definitive in a definitive uh sense. But I can, we'll pound the drum and see if we can get a better idea on the on the timeline for you.
Um you you're also asking for relief from the five hundred foot um road length, right?
We are for those two lots. So um the. The main cul-de-sac, as you come in from Central Street and you turn to the before, you know, without taking that that right-hand turn to the north. Um the main cul-de-sac is less than at or less than your five hundred feet, so no relief there. We would. Um the total distance, I think, from the Central Street up to the. Northerly circle on the northern side of the right away is eight hundred and forty-four feet. So we're asking for. About three hundred and forty-four feet of uh of relief there. Um and that's really just. There's no way to get frontage access um with those um for those lots. Uh without extending it that far. So there's, you know, we we look we look to try to minimize that. But of course, you know, we've got that circle situated about as far south on that northerly piece as possible to in order to get that frontage. Create that frontage.
So I see on the lot on the left, on the other side of the railroad. Uh wetlands replication area, is that replicating? Um wetlands that are lost due to the road and the cul-de-sac?
Correct.
So so you kind of have to do something on the other side. In order to satisfy wetlands issues on the, what's that, east side?
Uh well, so yeah, I mean, that's why we're showing it now. I mean, we do have some area on the. I guess I can show you. Sorry. Um there is some area right in here too that could be utilized. Um to us, it seemed like that this might be a better spot. Again, this is preliminary. We'd have to go through and do a definitive.
There's no other wetlands up there, right?
Uh well, you get the wet, like like we said, you get the wetlands adjacent to perennial.
You do there.
Yeah.
Up there.
There now, there's an isolated area. We did do an ANRAD on this too, so.
Yep.
Conservation Commission has seen this um and approved these these wetland areas, but. Um there's an isolated area up in here, but it's not a boring vegetated wetland, so I don't think we could really replicate against that. Um so the only other border and vegetated wetland uh other again, other than what's.
Oh, I see. Yeah, that's what I didn't see was the.
There's one back here, yeah.
Yep, okay.
That that would be directly adjacent to a border vegetated wetland, which I think is, it it seemed to be the best area, you know, to do it to us at this point. Again. Uh we haven't done any.
Um yeah, just curious, just can curious as to how interconnected the two parts of the project are.
Yep.
If this is six units, the um affordable housing provision applies, right?
Right.
Yep.
Yep.
You about that section seven thirty?
Yeah, we're of course not asking for any. Well, that's by law related, so not, you know, not surely not proposing any modifications to that.
Well, there certainly seems like there's a lot of ifs.
Uh well, yeah, I mean, I think um we've got the the um. I think the two major questions that we've heard tonight is is timing on the MBTA. Um and related to that is, you know, the sort of the elephant in the room is, are they going to allow, right? Um access across there. I mean, I think I would submit that. You could act independently. You may disagree with me, but I I think you could act independently of that decision. Um like I said. You could you could give an approval and they could deny it, and then we couldn't, we couldn't do that piece. Um you know, so. I mean, again, that's that's sort of up to you, but I think that's um that's one certainly one way of looking at it. Um. And then secondly is um per Mr. Wheeler's comment, you you know, the uh the question on the timing. Of the land swap and how that impacts the um status of the existing lot uh at two forty-eight um central. Um so I mean, and and well, as I mentioned, we will commit to um. Having better uh a legal opinion on the on that one I just mentioned uh regarding the timing issue and and trying to get you a better status update on the uh. Uh and update on the state process. So I I don't I don't want to, you know. I I know we gotta we gotta take another run at it, and I know you have a lot. You got a bunch more things on your agenda, so unless you have other things that you'd like to share with us, you know, we'll. We'll kind of put our pencils to the paper and uh and come back at you at your next um next hearing if possible.
Next meeting.
Yeah, I think that that would be great for us. Um we'd like to keep it. I don't know. We'd like to keep it moving.
Moving. Yep, agreed.
Any other thing, any anything else to add, Bruce? I don't want to cut you off.
No, uh we did have conceptual discussions uh with regard to the railroad and the. The the scope of work that we're we're proposing is consistent with um. Uh with scopes of work that they've approved in the past and but each situation is unique, you know, and and. Uh evaluated on its own, uh but it's i- it is within. Uh the the scope of the general scope of of things that they uh have approved. Uh but.
Right, well, the rail.
Everything is unique. Yeah.
Right, the rail trail will be going through there. So.
Right.
Um what accommodations, you know, what is the? Is your plan for the shared driveway to just go across the rail trail? Are you gonna? I know that the land um kind of right at the yellow line goes way down. And then comes back up again, um if I remember correctly.
Yeah, we'd be we'd be modifying the grade, you know, we'd be meet meeting the grade of whatever they have for their, you know, for their final um. Alignment grade, which I would assume would be the existing grade of the railroad bed. So we'd be, we would be adjusting our road to make sure we. Match that at the existing grade. And then, you know, we expect when we finally get to to negotiate with them. That that'll be the type of thing that we would be would be the subject of the negotiation. Um you know. Actual details for what they're going to require us to do, um crossing uh details, um. You know, I mean, you you know, there's there's rail trail crossings or roads all over the place. Uh so I can visualize it in my head, but you know, that that's the the details of exactly what they're going to require us to do for signage and. And any um barriers or this kind of thing, uh crossing protections. That that's what we expect to be engaging with them on.
Sure.
Good.
Alrighty. Anybody else have anything you want to add or comment? Board members?
Not at this time.
Uh Jay, what's available for our next meeting for uh on our agenda, sort of time-wise?
Uh the next meeting. Has no commitments yet and it's um. It's the twenty-sixth.
No, there's only one meeting in August.
And that's why.
September.
September nine.
Nine, September ninth and twenty-third.
Yep. Okay, so I mean, I think we could be ready to go for the ninth. Okay, so we'll put you on, how about eight o'clock? At your pleasure. Yep, okay. Okay, so Jay, can you pencil them in for eight P M. On the ninth, please?
Yep, absolutely.
Excellent.
Thank you for your time.
Just that or whatever, just reach out to Jack. Okay, great. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Take care.
Can I?
Good night.
Can I ask the board? I don't want to be on a turn, but can I ask the board on another matter real quick before I sign off? Would that be acceptable? Um I've got a I've got a pending application for uh Ed Cunningham, another preliminary filing that I. I came before you on, I think, two or three months ago. Um and I just wanted to get that on your radar for. I don't think we closed that off, so I uh I wanted to get that on your radar as well.
What's the address?
I knew you were going to ask me that. I I have it on the tip of my tongue. Bear with me one second. I'll find it.
Turner Road.
Yes, Turner Road. Thank you. Um it was the um we're we're looking to formalize the um.
Oh, right.
Cul-de-sac on the, you know, and and just get it one additional lot, essentially. I'm still trying to connect with the fire department, so I'm actually glad you didn't put it on tonight's meeting because I'm not really ready for you, but I guess I was hopeful I could maybe get. That on your uh your next agenda as well to kind of keep that process moving to. And that's it. That's all I wanted to say. I just before I signed off, I just wanted to catch you. Well, I had you all in the same room, so to speak, so.
Right, that's from June. That's from uh.
Yeah, and I think we continued to July and then we're trying to and then I think I had a conflict. We're trying to get the fire department and I think there was an. Forum issue and things, so I just wanted to keep it moving.
I think we had you on the agenda, but you you canceled, so I'll put you for the.
Yeah.
Same uh.
Yeah.
That same night, maybe eight thirty.
That would be great. Thank you very much. I'm trying to figure out how to stop sharing my screen, but I can't figure it out.
Oh, I might be able to do that.
I I found it.
Got it.
There we go. Okay, thank you very much. I apologize for that.
No problem.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Alrighty, we have um eight thirty. We're a little bit behind schedule, but uh. Our next is the discussion of Le- Legion Hall. Affordable housing project.
Assume this is actually Lisa and Kate.
Yeah, that's when your husband borrows your computer.
Howdy, how are you?
Hi. Um I'm gonna let Kate take lead on this. Um I want to make sure that everybody knows that I am in this one. I am Housing Trust, not Select Board. The next one I am going to take for Kristen, and I am Select Board over there.
Okay.
Hello, everyone.
Hello, who are you?
Yes, Kristen.
Great. Trying to adjust. There looks like there's some lighting issues. Anyway. Um we're here tonight to get feedback and. Possibly an endorsement from the planning board to convert the now vacant Legion Hall into. Um an affordable home. Um probably with the help of an organization such as Habitat for Humanity. Um it is an undersized lot. It currently has a seep pool and a well. Um the building itself is about twelve hundred square feet. And we would um certainly place a historic restriction on it. As well as the affordable restriction. Uh to preserve the envelope. Of its historic features. Um it would be renovated into a two-bedroom home. And I don't know if that would be de-restricted or not, but um. Two-bedroom is what um the likes of Habitat. Um qualifying individuals for. Um so that would be the goal. It would not be turned into a three-bedroom or a four-bedroom. There would be no other outer structures, no sheds, no garages. No real change to the outer structure, the outside of it or additions. I think the one thing uh when I met with the Historic Commission is they mentioned that. There would probably need to be a back door, which is most likely true. So that might be the exception. And then it would be done in character with the building. Um. I don't know that there's been any other uses considered for this. Um. There's been some light speculation, but it doesn't appear at this point that anyone else has any better idea. Um I think personally, um and in my experience, that it would make a great. Home for someone um in Berlin, and it would be like-kind housing. In that it would match the general characteristics and features of a lot of our homes. Um trending down to a smaller scale, which um could be cleaner. Um we are in the works of performing a percolation. And soil evaluation task. To determine the feasibility of it converting from the function hall to the flow rate of a two-bedroom home. Which it it seems if the soils are correct, then that could could be feasible. Um we'll know more um maybe by the end of the month. Um we would like to have this, I believe the Select Board are putting this on the fall. Uh town meeting agenda. So we're trying to get feedback, ideas, endorsements. Um answer any questions and just dig in a little harder from there. To make sure that we're prepared and that we can close the small gap. That um it needs to pass in the fall.
And I can can add that the Select Board is in support of this particular use. Um and that as of yet, nobody has come forth with another use. That does not mean that they won't, but as of yet, nobody has come forth with another use.
Okay, well, I would say, you know, from certainly from the zoning point of view, the use. Um is certainly allowable and consistent. The lot is. A pre-existing lot. So I think the 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 dimensions would 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 probably be protected, but I'd I'd ask other members of the board their thoughts on that. Uh, never speaking one.
Yeah, I. I mean, certainly, I think what you're proposing, um, from a zoning point of view. Um, would not have any difficulty. And once you accomplish the border health issues. Um, you know, it seems like your sailing gets easier. Um. And I. You know, the, I, I'm pleased with the notion that we're, and I know you've struggled with this, but trying to find. A lot somewhere that allows us to create, um, affordable units that are in existing. Structures, you know, I, to, to just put them into subdivisions and rely on that as the way we're gonna get these new. Um, units is, you know, a, gonna be a problem as far as I can see, and. And it's been a problem trying to figure out what parcels the town might own that, you know, it could convert into housing, but. Um, continuing on that road, I think makes a lot of sense, and to have. An opportunity like this and, and to be successful would really demonstrate to folks that there's the possibilities there and that we ought not to ignore it. You know, if there's other opportunities, we ought to take advantage of it, so. I'm not sure. We should endorse. This evening. Um. Just because of what you said, uh, we. I, I don't know, is there's gonna be anybody coming forward with a better possibility, but, um. Once the warrant is put out there and opened, um, you know. Letting sort of the opportunity for. I know Rec talked about the possibility of using it, I know, I think the Historical Commission has, has thought about it, but I think they've decided. I don't know officially, but I think they've decided it's probably beyond their capacity. Um. And I think we, you know, we still have time where we could endorse this fairly easily before town meeting, because it's not till, what, November ninth or something like that, so.
Yeah, I think it's November seventeenth.
Seventeenth, that's even better, I like them.
No, that's very helpful, um, I, I think it's a nice way to add fill in housing, to fill in some of the gaps without. Having something totally new or making new roads, um.
Right.
Uh, the Historical Commission. It, it, it is not their hope to have the property transferred, but they were very pleased. That we are, um. Definitely going to. One of our, our, our requirements will be to have the historic preservation on it as well as the affordable, so. Um, we talked about different enforcement type things as well, but they were very pleased about that fact. Um, and if it can't be what they want it to be, they're happy, at least in that regard.
Yeah, good.
And a lot of times the best thing for old buildings is for them to be used. Sitting does not do well for older things.
I was just gonna say that.
That, that was also, I was gonna, we have so many buildings that we just hold on to and. They sit there and fall apart, and, um, I think, I know the Select Board's goal is certainly to. Try to start addressing those issues, whether it be reuse or moving them on.
This would take a property that is not on the tax rolls to. Um, earning, I don't know, I, I, actually, this is a good question, I don't know if it would be. An adjusted tax rate per affordable regulation, okay, but nonetheless, it, it would add some tax revenue back.
No, sounds good.
Yep.
Great, thank you for your time.
Yes, we will, we will plan to either chat or hear from you closer to town meeting then. Thank you.
Awesome.
Thanks. Good night.
Perfect, thank you.
So then the next agenda item, I think, is also Lisa.
Mm-hmm, I told Kristen she could have the night off since I had to be here anyways. I also got appointed as your, um, Select Board liaison, so if there are meetings that you think I should be at, or things that you think the board should know. Um, Kristen is always a viable option, but I'm also here for you. Um, so, sort of in that same vein, the Select Board has been looking at how we can repurpose or offload. Um, some of the buildings that have, are sitting and have no purpose in town, so, um. The Old Town Barn is one of those buildings. Um, one of the things that has come up recently is to potentially make that a parking lot for the rail trail. Um. We did, um, here today that that was built, the actual structure underneath that was built in eighteen ninety-nine as a horse barn. And the building was moved in nineteen thirty. Um, so that was a bit of a surprise, so I think Historic is gonna have some interest in that building. Um, I don't think that necessarily rules out a parking lot, but I wanted to make sure that you all had that information. Um, Kristen has also reached out potentially to a municipal auctioneer as an, as an alternate thing to see whether. It would have value as an auctioned off property.
Well, you gotta be careful if it's going to be, the, whatever uses goes in there, because you don't own the water, you borrow it from the neighbor. And there's no septic system to speak of.
And the neighbor, the neighbor also has first right of refusal.
That's right.
And that lot is very, very teeny, which is why we were looking at, you know. Very alternate uses for it, whether it be, you know, a business goes in there, or we take it down for a rail trail. Or, you know, if, if we decide we want to keep that structure, maybe we can still put something in for the rail trail. Um, just a smaller parking lot. Um, but we did want to get your thoughts on use for the property. Thoughts on using it for a, a parking lot for the rail trail specifically.
I think the other thing too is if you're looking to convey it, um, I don't know if it'll pass a twenty-one E because of the use before. My suspicions is that there was some stuff that's been spilled over the years there, and, uh. It might be problematic, I know we, we looked at many different ways before we built the, uh, the new highway town bond. We looked at that, and we looked at other structures in town to see if there was a way that we could satisfy what was desired by the highway department. But that, that building was, there wasn't really much we could do with it.
Yeah, which is why, you know, we thought potentially a parking lot for the rail trail.
It's.
Building, it fits into that teeny tiny little lot.
Exactly.
It's, it touches the rail trail.
It touches the rail trail.
We, we actually, the, the town squatted on it for years, put stuff that was ours on the right away.
Yeah.
That's a, I hear a lot of it still there.
Uh, there's a, there's a fair amount that's still there.
Yeah, we did also, um, just have to sort of have a conversation, apparently there, there have been cars parked there. From the business next door, which legal, legal was very uncomfortable with.
Sure.
So, we're addressing that also.
Uh, it's history is interesting, of course, eighteen ninety-nine built as the horse sheds for the meeting house. And if you look at some of those old photos of the center of town, you see it sitting there behind the meeting house. Um.
I think it'll be interesting to see, I know that Historical wants to visit, so I think it'd be interesting to see whether all of that structure is still intact underneath there. Because that sort of would be the, sort of the litmus test.
Right.
If those big old strong beams are still under there, and you could strip off the new stuff.
Yes, or even disassemble it and put it somewhere else, it's a pavilion or whatever, but, yeah.
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 Um, because it's been moved, I know that from a state standpoint, it has less value as a historic structure, it would really be a, a Berlin focus, sort of.
Yep.
Yeah.
If, if you do schedule a time when the, there's gonna be a viewing, um, if, if you could let us know. I, I'd appreciate it, I'd.
Okay.
Been a while since I was in it.
Yep.
Yeah, I feel too, if, if there was something to be done, I mean, I feel that that could potentially be an application of CPA monies, but that's a conversation for your other head.
Right, yep. Yeah.
So, the twenty-one E, that's the environmental assessment, right? And that is for the soil, or that is for?
Usually the soil, I mean, they do, they can do other things, you can do air and stuff like that, but there's nothing in the air that's been vacant for a while.
Right, it's, it's more of being concerned. Right, and so a parking lot, I would assume.
It's fine, yeah, yeah, and, and the town will retain it, so if the town retains it, there's no need or twenty-one E, it's only if they're going to convey it to somebody else.
Got it. So the, the.
The buyer could opt, the buyer could opt to waive the twenty-one E, but then for them to develop it, I mean, it's teeny tiny lot. I mean, I don't know what they're gonna develop it into, a park.
If they're just adding to their yard, then it's.
It could be, it could be first right of refusal for the neighbors.
Right.
It could be, mm-hmm.
Right, but.
That would.
Uh, yeah, twenty-one E. You know, if, if they acquire it, they, they acquire all the problems with it as well.
Correct.
They, so, even if they were just gonna take it down. They would be, uh, inheriting any underlying problems that they are.
Correct.
Yep.
Yeah. I have no idea what happened to the nuclear powered dump truck that we had back in the early sixties.
So, what I will bring back then is that, um, we do need to be careful about twenty-one E in the case of any sale. Um. And that in general, they're sort of a, a favorable towards the parking lot, and that planning would like to know. When the visit is going to happen by Historic at the, at the building.
Yeah, and I think as, as, as a survey of the building is, is made to, you know, think about, uh. What might be salvageable, what might be taken apart and put somewhere else, like a pavilion on South Common or something like that, but. Not suggesting anything tonight, but suggesting that we think about that as we go forward.
Do you have any thoughts about where it would make sense to put it if it was moved?
Um, no, not, not in, I have to be in Boston at, uh, seven o'clock tomorrow morning. And I, I, I wouldn't want to start talking at nine o'clock, um.
It, it would be interesting to evaluate the potential of its reuse. As a pavilion, and we, we've.
Yeah, like put picnic tables in there, strip off all the garbage.
Well, I mean, CPA has got a proposal from Rec to put up a pavilion for a hundred and fifty thousand, but that's. Multiple years now that it hasn't been built, and the potential is there that the cost would be greater than the amount of money we allocated. And, uh, you know, it'd be interesting to see if even structurally it would be allowed to use. A, a, a building like this for that type of use.
Hmm.
Um. You know, maybe they'd just say, no, it wouldn't meet code, and as a result, you don't even go there, or. Or someone might say, you know, yeah, there's some possibilities, and you could repurpose this, the structure and, uh. You know, use the CPA money that was gonna go to a, a metal roof, um, you know, eight post. Structure with, I forget how many square feet, um, maybe, you know, make sense work pursuing, having a.
I, I'm standing, it's supposed to be building under all of that.
Yeah.
Uh.
My guess is what's under there is probably pretty solid, but that's just, just my theory.
Yeah, so it'd be fun, I mean, it's worth asking the questions at least.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Thanks.
I will bring this stuff back, thank you.
Awesome.
Thank you.
All right, Peg's up next, if I remember correctly.
Yep.
Is the lot next to that building also part of that property?
No.
There's a, right, so if you, you look at, there's a lot, it's town land, but it's mostly wetlands, if you're talking about the lot to the right.
Yeah, it's all covered with trailers and.
Yeah, yeah, that's all town land and wetlands and.
A piece.
Yep.
What's, what's all the, the, the stuff that's stored there, that's not town property?
It is not, it, it is not town property that is stored on town property.
Got it.
Mm-hmm.
Really?
I, I believe, I believe it's creep from the other, from the neighbor.
Yeah. Yeah, we may have a second order come to our hand, bound to, uh, to.
Right.
An earlier issue for us.
This is the lot between the building and the pond?
This is the lot between the pond and the house.
Right.
The, 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 the building, the, the lot is one fifth of an acre. And at least according to the G I S, it looks like the building is almost entirely the lot.
Yeah, that was my understanding from back when I was a selectman, and we had a few things there.
Yep.
So what's, what is the lot between the pond and that property then?
There's only one lot, which is the one that this is on, there's the house and the pond, and this is.
Right, the pot, all of the property that includes the pond in between the garage. And the build, the old highway building is all one lot owned by the town.
Okay.
So regardless.
What's it?
Happens.
Then?
Well, regardless of what happens to the building and the lot, there's some cleanup that. Probably should be done.
Mm-hmm.
Can we, um, promote and peg?
Sure.
So, can I just ask one more question before we? The pond, the land next to it is a two point four seven acre parcel that's on map. Fifteen, one, parcel eleven. I, I don't understand what the suggestion is here about that. Piece between the pond and the barn being part of the town's land.
The, it, on the G I S, hold on, let me find it again.
I'm on the assessor's maps.
Here. According to Mass G I S. Oh, no, that's not town land, that's Robert Wheeler.
That's why I was saying, it's between the pond and the house.
Yes, right, so between Harri. Yes, right, so between Harris Road and the. Building. Um, yeah, that was, that was my mistake.
The lot is basically a hundred by a hundred by a hundred. But the land where the extra vehicles are parked is not town land and. Is part of that whole two point four seven acre piece, okay, good. Good, I thought my memory was shot.
Yeah, no, I I it was my memory that was.
That makes me feel better.
Yeah, thanks, doesn't make me feel better, but.
Get over it.
Okay, we ready to continue our discussions? Everybody happy? Alright, hi Peg, how are you?
Hi, everyone, how are you?
Good, thank you.
So I sent earlier an email, I don't know if you've seen it yet, my proposed wording, if I can share the document. I just made a few changes to it, proposed changes, wanted to get your input. On the wording and chatting with Eloise because this is a special town meeting, I thought that I would only need. A few signatures, turns out that I need a hundred certified ones, so I wanna giddy up. And start tracking down those signatures, so that's why I asked for a. Appointment with you folks to talk about the wording, so I could just print and go and start to talk to folks. So I'm happy to. So, um, can everyone see my screen? Okay, so this is, I just put it in two, so here's the current bylaw, there's two. Four forty four point three and four fifty four point two, and this is the wording. That I'm looking to change, so down in my revised, the only thing. The only words that I've added are these. May include fast food restaurants only located at Highland Commons and Solomon Pond, Solomon Pond Mall. For both of them, that's it, I'm not looking to do anything with the Rotary, I'm not looking anything to do with River Bridge, I could care less about them, I'm not. Looking to do anything with any Dunkin' Donuts located in town. I want it at the ends of town so that people can whiz in off the highway, whiz out onto two ninety and then do the same for. Four ninety five and that's it, I've been chatting with Elizabeth Kelly, the general manager over at the mall. And she told me, let me find my email, she told me that she did have discussions. With, I'm stalling where I can find it, her specific wording. She said that there were potential buyers for the mall that noted concerns about the restrictions, so. We're potentially losing opportunities for people to come in and buy that mall because of the restriction on. Not fast, not not for food establishment, so I'm not promising. That there will be people who will come in and wanna drop insert fast food restaurant here, but. To give them the opportunity.
Think I'm on it, though. We'll find out.
Bye, Kate. So that's all, just looking for suggestions that you may have, but I wanna be. If I can get the signatures, then I wanna be specifically clear at town meeting. It's at the malls and that's it, nowhere else, so that's why it was like short suite. With the only located at those two spots. So what are you thinking?
So if I were a president, I would say, so does that mean there's can be one next to DCU? Does that mean there can be one at next to Best Buy? So like, how do we define Solomon Pond Mall?
Well, I I don't know, because I don't know what the zoning is, I don't know what the proposed zoning.
Well, it'd be Marlboro, wouldn't it?
I think DCU is Marlboro. Didn't we have that problem when they wanted the the pot place down there and Marlboro said no, cuz we couldn't drive down that road, that was Marlboro Road? Right, Marlboro Road.
Yes.
Yeah, and I think to follow on what Carolyn said, I I think. That you may want to say and may, and I would say, I would get rid of fast foods, I would put restaurants. Within the overlay zone. The overlay zones for the, and and I don't know exactly what, how that's expressed in current bylaw. The overlay zones for Highland Commons, it's all on mall, and Carolyn is is. Is I is DCU and.
Well, it's right, so I'm actually looking right now to see where on Donald Lynch.
So those, that's all Marlboro, so the only, there's no. Frontage on Donald Lynch Boulevard in Berlin, okay, so anything that's.
Right, and and kind of, you know, I was kind of playing devil's advocate, but I just wanna make sure that we're. Very clear, and I think, I think Tom's. Idea of, you know. Right, referencing the overlay district.
Right, so it's.
Helps to clarify it.
It's it's regional shopping center overlay district and highway shopping center overlay district. Those are the, those are the two overlays that you'd reference.
Tim, can you give those to me again, I'll flop them in now.
Yeah, but. So regional shopping center overlay district. Which is section four twenty. Four forty is highway shopping center overlay district, which is Highland Commons. So the thing is that. You, we're not addressing, we're addressing the overlays, not those specific projects. Because it's the overlay language that really dictates what happens in those. So you wanna stay away from Highland Commons and Solomon Pond, that those are irrelevant.
Right, because if the people that buy the mall. Change the name, now all of a sudden.
Doesn't work.
It doesn't work.
Now. This is a, I mean, what I, today I met with. Jane and. And Ron and from Central Mass. To say what are the, what's the low hanging fruit that the planning board wants to address? For this town meeting. Assuming that the rewrite of the zoning bylaw is gonna take us. Into next year, but that there may be some things we want to include on the warrant this time around. And one item was certainly what to do about Solomon Pond. Mall, that overlay district, the, you know, the regional shopping center overlay district. And I said, we're waiting to hear from Liz. Who the potential buyer might be in order to understand what modifications we might wanna make. To the overlay. And that we would, we had said to Marlboro and to Liz. That we would try to do that in as timely a fashion as possible, which. Given the fact we've got a town meeting scheduled for the seventeenth of November or whatever, it seems like that's our target.
If if they have a buyer and.
And and she says they they have two buyers, they've narrowed it down to, and they're in just in the process of finalizing. Which one it's gonna be, so I I think we're gonna hear fairly quickly. And then the wheels are gonna have to start rolling on our end if we're gonna live up to our, you know, our obligation to. To try to match zoning as best we can with potential new uses. So this, this would be rolled into that. And it would mean that. You don't wanna take the risk that we may not get there, but that's why you've gotta go out and get a hundred signatures, but it may very well be that we don't use. What you propose, because we included in a. A more serious rewrite of the overlay and include language that. Moves in this direction anyway.
Yeah.
For that site.
Yeah, Tim, and that's fine, I mean, if you, if you all are ready to roll and have something, you know, different that includes. This here, then I'm willing to pull it up until the very last minute or stand up on town floor. That night and and pass it over, but I don't wanna take that risk, I don't.
No, and you shouldn't.
Want time to go by, so this is why I need to start in my quest for all those signatures. Cuz Eloise told me I could wait until May and then I'd only need ten, I'm like, nah, no, I don't wanna waste that time.
Yeah, you can also convince the planning board that we wanna put it on the warrant and then you don't have to get any signatures.
Well, again, you know, we can have both going, you know, I know that you you all are gonna be busy and working on other things, and if this is. Something small that I can take and run with, and then we meet before town meeting and you're like, nope, got it, then I'm I'm ready to roll, but. I prefer to have a plan B than to put everything in, you know, potentially waiting, cuz who knows, buyer could fall apart. Way too many things. So are you, are you comfortable with with this wording, because then I'll take this and then just. Plop it on the pages of signatures that I need and start going to hang out at the transfer station and Sawyer Hill and. Nineteen Kata and anywhere else where I can find Berlin peeps.
So it's regional shopping center overlay district, so you need center in there. Regional shopping center. And then, and then it's highway shopping center overlay district is the second one.
And they should all be capitalized.
Yeah.
Cuz it's a title. Highway shopping center overlay district, but yes, also.
Done, and then I'll just cut and paste it up.
Sounds like a plan.
Awesome, well, I very much.
I I would just say if you. If you need a signature on it, I'm happy to do it, I've always thought that. Not having that in those two areas has been an economic. Cost to the town. So I think, and it levels playing field, so I think. I think it's a great idea, even though I don't like drive, but you know. This is not personal, this is what I think makes sense.
Well, you know, I mean, that's part of it, Tom, is that, you know, I'm not gonna stand up and make any promises, that we're gonna get, you know, hundreds of bazillions of dollars, but you know what? We're gonna get more money than we're getting now.
I mean, you know, cuz the restaurants are a real bump, you know, over over retail and. We're not getting restaurants in our areas of that because of this, so it, yeah.
Right, and you need to look at your untapped potential of, you know, eighty thousand cars every day. Whizzing down two ninety and four ninety five and the skating rink that is open year round, that is huge untapped. Potential that.
It's the way of the world right now, these these kind of restaurants have these kind of facilities.
So Peg, can you send that revised text to us?
I would love to.
Cuz I I think there's a couple little blips that we may wanna change, but.
Okay.
I wanna look quietly.
Yep, no, I'll send it and then. We'll start, we'll start in September, my tour, but at least I can go start to talk to people. Now, and I'm hoping that that will get some of their questions and concerns. Out, you know, about leaving the historic rustic value of Berlin, blah, blah, blah. It's like in, out, in, out, you know, you're not traveling through the center of town, not flopping it in the center of town, not flopping it anywhere else. Ends, and that's it. Alright, no, I will, I will go back to the email that I sent you earlier and. Cut and paste that and drop it in, and if you have any comments, let me know, otherwise I will start to rock and roll.
Alrighty.
Awesome, thank you so much, I appreciate you all.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Anything else?
That's it, we've cut through the agenda, so now it's.
Has to be in Boston, seven, may I make the motion to adjourn? Not so bad.
I wanna elaborate on my meeting with Jane and Ron, so they're ready to go. They wanna, they they said, how are we structuring this, I said. It it wouldn't be driven by the full planning board, it would be. Different members of the planning board joining in for different facets, along with. Other folks that might come in from Housing Trust or ZBA or. Economic Development Committee or Highway or, you know, Police and Fire, so as long as. You're comfortable with that approach. They're comfortable with that, they've used that in other towns where there might be, I I said I'd be happy to be. Representing the planning board, but then the different members would come in at different times, cuz it seems like that's what we talked about. Couple months ago when we addressed this with Jane.
Right.
And so they're happy with that, but they would like to schedule a time to meet with us and kick this off. And that can be on the ninth of September.
How long do they need?
I mean, I think you could. Probably could be fairly short, you know. I mean, if you, twenty minutes or, you know, twenty five minutes, something like that, and so if you've got two appointments right now, one for eight and one for eight. Thirty.
Can we put them on for like seven forty?
Yeah, maybe it'd be better to. Maybe better to do it after, just in case it runs a little long. Rather than squeezing them in before.
Yeah, that's fine, I think it is actually good to have them at the end.
I mean, I could tell them eight forty. What we give other guys, eight and eight fifteen?
We, no, we did eight.
We can start it, well, there's usually something small that shows up with the seven forty five slot, but.
I don't think you're gonna learn a lot with either one of them to to give them half an hour.
Each fifteen minutes and then.
Tell them eight and eight fifteen and then we'll do Jane and Ron at eight thirty.
Yeah, that's, that sounds good.
And someone else is gonna have to open the meeting because I will be on. Actually, at that point, I will be in Sequoia National Park.
Oh, you poor thing.
I know. This is my, and my annual trip west every September, so.
You can climb a sequoia and get.
Yeah.
Full phone signal, you know?
I I'm sure, I'm sure I could. I'm also pretty sure that it'll be four in the, or actually, it'll be two in the afternoon when we start, two thirty.
You can calm down before it gets dark.
Yeah, right?
So I'll tell Jane eight thirty, now the other thing we talked about was, what do they? Address first, and I said ADUs because we're not confident that the language we voted is gonna. Pass muster and from what they've experienced with the Attorney General's Office. Some of the stuff gets flown around, so we might wanna have that on the sip, on the November town meeting, just to get that dressed up. The other would be the mall if indeed. The other would be the mall, if indeed there's a sale and someone can articulate what it is they wanna have us modify. And then the third thing I mentioned was this fast food restaurant piece, which. You know, we've sort of begun to play around with anyway, so. Are there other items that we think they need to address? Potentially for this town meeting as opposed to next year?
Um, I know I have talked with Kristen about a stormwater management bylaw.
So stormwater management, you know. Low impact development, all those things would be included, and I think it's more likely that that's all gonna be part of what we. Try to include in the May town meeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, but that's, yeah, those are high on the list. Because. That's. Stormwater management, erosion control. You wrap that in with some earth removal stuff, just to make sure that we're in sync with the new texts that came through and low impact development.
Yep.
I mean, this, this, there's gonna be some nice additions, I think, to the bylaw that help us. Sync up with what you're trying to do with conservation and stuff, so.
Awesome, and and the spring actually is better for me, cause we have a new. Conservation agent and that will give her a little bit of time to get her feet under.
Good, good.
Okay, so now can I make the motion? I move adjourn.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded and it's not debatable, so I'll ask you to vote. Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
Jay Teach.
Aye.
Thomas Andrew.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
Tom Sanford, aye, motion carries unanimously.